Morning, Moatato. Good morning, councillors, staff, officers, members of the public. Fakataka kahaui kita uru, fakataka tahaui kita tonga. Kia makiina kina kiuta, kia matara taraki tae. Ehiake ana te atakura, e teo, e huka, e hohu. Ti hei mo diorda. Thank you very much, everybody, for attendance this morning. Just want to remind everybody that the meeting is being livestreamed to vast audience out in the Wellington public and beyond. And all voting will be done electronically, so please remember to push your button when called. I've got an apology this morning from councillor Lee. I don't have any apologies for lateness, but I know that we've got a couple of councillors not there yet. I expect them to be attending shortly. Do I have a second for the apology for councillor Lee? Councillor Sparrow? All those in favour, please, vote on your device. Morning councillors. Councillor Wolf and councillor Kelwitt, would you like to vote, please, on the apologies? Could you please vote? Thank you. I'm going to clear that carried. I've got one announcement to make this morning, and it's around a minor change to the name of one of the council portfolio areas. I don't believe this requires a report, given it's a very minor change, and that the public transport portfolio held by councillor Free will now be called Public Transport, Open Bracket, Infrastructure, Closed Bracket. So we're simply adding that to the website, to make it clear for people, and this is something that's been requested by councillor Free, which I'm happy to support, to get rid of any confusion around what her duties, obligations, responsibilities, and what she's empowered to do, effectively. Now, the name change will be effective from today. So thank you councillor Free for bringing that to our attention. A conflict of interest declaration, does anybody have one they wish to lodge? No? We'll now move to confirm the minutes from the council meeting held on the 12th of December 2018, having been circulated and taken as read and confirmed as an accurate record of that meeting. Councillor Gilwich, would you second? All those in favour, please vote accordingly. The motions are carried. I now invite Richard Burrow regarding item 2.1, the Town Hall Strengthening Music Hub, to come and speak and address the council. Richard, you've got five minutes. If you'd please leave some time for questions, because we do have some, and thank you for coming and submitting to us today.
Building Solutions have just completed strengthening the old Ford Motor Company in Seaview. Eighteen thousand metres of category two heritage, and we have another six buildings we are strengthening as we speak. Frankly, I am sick of it. The city must fix the price and delivery date now if you were to proceed. You have a good contractor. There is no risk for the contractor. The city always pays. It is not like they are working for an Auckland property company, where the last million-dollar payment is never guaranteed, even when they've done a good job. Nala Love will provide the city with a fixed price. Go back to them, and then tell the rate payer the number. Council officers will tell you there is a crisis in the construction industry. This is bullshit. Three major builders in five years went under only because their wealthy owners lost interest in their plaything. Mainzil, very topical, Richard Yan is worth 500 million, and Hiding in China. Hawkins, the McConnell family, is worth 250 million. Eberts, Bronwyn and Kelvin Hale are worth 60 million. None of them had to walk away from their construction companies, they just lost interest. When the going got too hard, they walked away. Fletcher stopped refreshing their project management staff. They were all old blokes like me. It's a young man's game. Your council offices propose an open-ended contract on a fixed margin. Hut City used the same contract on their heritage office and town hall complex, on a budget of 20 million in 2010, and we submitted to a council meeting and said it would be 50 mil. They are currently at 85 million and will not tell the rate payers the final cost, and they would not ever give us a copy of the contract, and suggested we write to the ombudsman. We gave up at the end of the day. Delay the project eight weeks. Let's bring in a new engineer, work with Nala Love on a 50 or, and a 70% scheme, and bring that number back to the city for discussion. What has the city spent on the project after the last, over the last nine years? Nine million? Tell us this number. I don't see that recorded anywhere in the discussions today. At this meeting, we should have before us a 50% cost, a 70% cost, the 100% cost which you have today, and a fixed price cost. The city is heading to a billion dollars of debt, two years earlier than predicted by the CEO last year. Thank you.
Questions councillor Young? You have a question we should ask?
Thank you, Richard. And obviously, I read the article in the paper with your comments yesterday. So just talking to you about the building, and so the piles of the town hall are not, I understand, they're not reinforced, and they're not particularly well-connected to the structure. And also that the north wall is particularly weak. So what, when you were making your comments about the building, what is your understanding of these issues? And how would you strengthen those elements?
I have no idea about strength, as in the engineering of the strengthening. All I do is employ engineers. We select a different engineer for each project, and we would, you've got good consultants on board, you've had Becker for five years, and now you've had Holmes for five years. And I don't know why that change was made, but I need an engineer to sit beside me who's been involved in the project, and but it's, what is essential is, what is the cost at 50? What is it at 70? What is it at 100? And it might be that the engineer says it should be taken to 80, and there is a saving. You know, but you need that on the table today, and it ain't here.
So on that, so one of the things that's really forefront in our minds nowadays, especially post-Kai Kura and the Christchurch earthquakes, are the health and safety issues, like we're all, everyone's obsessed about that these days. And we have, there are enormous obligations on building owners to make sure that people are safe. So I think you were talking yesterday about a 40% seismic standard. How would you reconcile that with a public building that can house up to 2,000 people?
Well, it didn't worry the city for two years after the earthquake, when you kept running it. City didn't care, they just kept putting people in there.
Yeah, but I think that was before Kai Kura?
No, 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 after Kai Kura.
No, because Kai Kura was, no, because Kai Kura was 2016, and we closed it in 2013. So it's just, so my concern is that you don't think we need to do such a major upgrade. And I'm, and I, and I struggle to think how as a city council, we would be responsible if we did not do it properly so that people are safe?
Well, you put a sign up saying it's to 50%, or 70. I've just been advising a board in Auckland who have a $60 million project, they're similar to what you're doing, and all they had before them was a builder's price, which wasn't fixed, and 100% scheme from the engineer. I went before the board in December and said, "Come back with 50, 70, 100, and a fixed price." And they put another engineer on to work with their existing engineer, there was nothing wrong with their scheme. They made a decision last week at their board meeting to go with 80%. And I can't disavow the party because they've got me signed on the confidentiality agreement, because they don't know what, they don't want people to know their buildings are in earthquakes, but we can talk about that later.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much councillor Young. Councillor Foster?
Thank you very much, Richard. My question is, you talked about a fixed price. If you were tendering for it, at the moment, we've got a fixed price, which you see there, and an unspecified contingency, but if you were tendering for the building, and knowing what you know about the building, and, you know, underground conditions, et cetera, you know, how would you factor that in as a tenderer before you actually said, "Now, that's a fixed price I can live with"? I'm not putting a number on it, but a process you'd go through.
The builder has been, you've got a good builder, they want the job. There will be a number, there will be a number that they will fix the project at, and I don't know what that is. It might be 130, it might be 140, it might be 150, but it should be on the table today for you guys and the rate payers to know that we can fix it and have no risk. And you have, you know, an engineering team, you have a builder that wants to do the work, and they, and there will be a number that they will fix the price, and I have no idea.
I guess the question is then, Richard, what we're really asking you is, are they going to fix a price, if you were to fix a price as a tenderer, would you not fix a price that actually made sure that you were not going to be exposed very much, and therefore it's a much higher price than it would be potentially if you kind of work your way through the risk?
That may be so, but it's not on the table here today. And you're having a conversation, you know, in private later, about some contingency fund. You know, the construction industry and the engineers around town, since September last year, have all been talking about 130 million. It seems like a surprise to you guys at the table here. But, you know, when I mentioned it to Kevin, he sort of told me off for mentioning it. Said, "How, we're not finished the process"? Well, it's sort of been a number, and I think if you talk to a number of people through the industry, they've been talking about 130 million, but I'm not saying that's the price that it can be fixed at. That has been an industry number. And, you know, you've got 112, and I see there's 6 million for the wall in this building, so we're at 118. And you're heading into an open-ended, you know, the question I ask is, what if the project ends up at 200 million? What if it ends up five years down the track? You can fix it today. I'm sure you can fix it. The contracts have been fixed in Auckland. There is no, you know, Wellington may be different. You're saying to us, "We're short of builders"? We're not having any trouble getting builders, and certainly when I've rung two or three of the major players in Auckland, they're getting two or three people to turn up and tender for all their projects going forward.
Thank you, Richard. And one final question from me. You submitted to us when you wanted to move the airport from its current location to Newlands on the Hills. You submitted to us when you wanted to purchase Shelly Bay to park your boat and build a house there. He's submitting to us today. Are some of your ideas fanciful?
No, not at all. I deal, I deal with this daily. I deal with strengthening on a daily basis, and it is, it is a difficult, complicated situation, but we're able to fix prices, and I say to you, you guys are able to fix prices. And I work with good engineers. And with eight weeks' work with another engineer, we could come up with a 70 or 80% or a 50% scheme, at least it's on the table and you know what the cost is.
Thank you, Richard. Thanks again for your submission. Appreciate you taking the time to come and talk to us. Thank you, councillors. We're now going to move to report 3.1, first item of general business regarding the Town Hall Strengthening and Music Hub. I'm very pleased to introduce the report, and it'll be seconded by, sorry, 2.1, sorry, I don't hear wrong, 2.1, and it'll be seconded by councillor Young. Now, it gives me great pleasure to introduce this report, after much work has been done. When I was first elected as mayor, look, I said, and we as a council said, "Look, we want to get on with jobs that have been stalled in the city for quite some time, and we want to see some resolution of things that were holding us back." We agreed our triennial plan, and it focused on many of these issues. One was Shelly Bay, and we made some decisions, and sure, we had to revisit some of those things, but we're getting on with them. Likewise, around the convention and exhibition centre, where we've made a decision, we'll see construction commence on that project this year. The Town Hall is another one of those that have been stalled over a period of time, and I think have been wrecked by indecision. We made a decision in our long-term plan to fund up to $90 million, based on a provisional budget that was quantity surveyed, estimated and reviewed. We now have a tender price of 112 million with a contingency item, and we now have some certainty that we can proceed with this project. Look, the Town Hall is our cultural and civic heart, and I think every Wellingtonian acknowledges that. It has a unique place of pride and is a taonga within our city. It was opened in 1904, and earthquake strengthening has been a constant theme throughout its history. The Town Hall clock was installed in 1922, after economic uncertainty throughout the World War One times, but then that Town Hall clock and the tower were both removed following the Napier earthquake in 1931 for a matter of public safety. Over a series of the next few decades, they had to remove the Corinthian capitals, the Ionic capitals, and all of the largely architecturally ornamented style of the facade were also removed because of threats of public safety and concern in the event of an earthquake. So earthquake strengthening and improvements to the building have been a constant theme since its construction and opening in 1904. It's also faced the question of demolition on a number of occasions, most recently going back to the late 1980s, when the Michael Fowler Centre was opened, and there were questions around the demolition and repurposing of the land where the Town Hall sits. Wellingtonians came out in force and said this was a unique part of the city, the heart of the city, and they wanted to see its retention. Also, given the acoustic qualities of the auditorium, there is no way you could ever replicate what already exists for a feasible price. Wellingtonians have always supported the intention to invest in this facility. We've also got some shared experience of what other cities had faced post-earthquake events. The best example, and particularly in our recent history, is Christchurch. We all are aware of the 2011 Christchurch earthquake, and just last week, eight years on from the earthquake, the Christchurch Town Hall reopened. It had been closed since 2011, when it undertook earthquake strengthening and significant refurbishment, initially budgeted in the tens of millions of dollars, ultimately approved $127 million, with a final construction cost of $167 million, to refurbish and strengthen the Christchurch Town Hall. And it opened last week to much fanfare and excitement of Canterbrians. Similarly, in Christchurch, the Christchurch Public Art Gallery, constructed and opened in 2003, eight years later experienced the Christchurch earthquake and likewise was shuttered. A brand-new building, eight years old, built to 100% of earthquake code, what was the problem with it? The foundation sank. It no longer sat on steady foundations. What did they do? They spent $35 million base isolating the building. And that's where we sit today. We are taking a decision to base isolate the building, to guarantee this, not for the next eight years, 18 years or 28 years, but to guarantee its indefinite future and for the next 100 years for refurbishing it. We want to do this once and do it properly. We could have spent tens of millions of dollars, and we would have been back here in 20 or 30 years' time, hopefully not us around the council table, but somebody would have been back here with another decision to do exactly the same thing again and to spend more money. And how do we know that? That that would have been the case? Because it's already happened once. Here's a lovely brochure from the 1992 opening after the earthquake strengthening and refurbishment. It was a beautiful building. What was the problem? The technology of the strengthening of the day and the cost-cutting decisions that were made meant that we're back here, what, 27 years later from 1992, having to do it all again? It had been earthquake strengthened, if they'd base-isolated then, which was a new and emerging technology, we wouldn't be back here today. I don't want to make the same decision for future rate payers to have to pay the same amount of money all over again at inflated prices. So I've spent the last week talking to a whole host of people around what level of support is there for the Town Hall and this investment. I've talked to previous mayors, those that know the building intimately because they had their mayoral offices and chambers in there. I've talked to Fran Wild, to Kerry Prendergast, I called Mark Blumsky, collect a new way, he didn't pick up the phone unfortunately. I've talked to Mayor Siliway Brown and Deputy Mayor Ian McKinnon as well, and to a T, they said the same thing. It's worth the investment, it's the only logical and rational choice, and they support what we're doing as a city. Likewise, we've had feedback from New Zealand Symphony Orchestra, Victoria University of Wellington, Wellington Orchestra, Chamber of Music, Footnote Dance, New Zealand Festival, and mirrored with all of the comments from the arts and cultural organisations around the city, that can we please get on with it? This is an important, lasting asset for the city, and we just want to see it strengthened so we can get back and use it. And Wellingtonians have said the same thing, too. Could we demolish it? Well, actually, no, we can't. Even if we don't want to, and I don't want to, we can't demolish the building, it's not even a viable option. We've seen that with the Harcourts Building in Lampin Key. This is a category one listed heritage building. Where you can show there's an economically viable alternative to strengthening the building, you must strengthen it. Demolition is not even an option. Would we want to mothball it? No. That's an abrogation of our duty and responsibility as our city's governors to make sure that we don't leave buildings sitting to waste. And what sort of example would we be setting for all of the private sector, who are likewise required to upgrade and strengthen their buildings within permitted timelines under legislation? So my suggestion to you today is we get on with it and we do this work. We do it once and we do it properly. We base-isolate the building, we build for the future and for the next 100 years. We have inherited this building from those that came before us. It is a city asset, and it's a city legacy, and it is a taonga and the cultural and civic heart. We've inherited it, and it's now our duty to gift it to future generations to enjoy it in the same way that we have since 1904. I'm very proud that we'll be getting on with this project. I hope that we'll have strong support around this table. Thank you councillor Young for seconding, and thank you for your contributions councillors, to all the staff who've worked on this, to Bea, to Ian in particular, and the project management team, but for all of your contributions. Kia ora, Moatato, and thank you.
Thank you, mayor. First of all, I'd just like to say a big thank you to the officers who have done an enormous amount of work on this incredibly complex project. I'm told it's the most complicated engineering project in New Zealand for at least a generation because it's built where it was originally harbour, because it is a heritage building, essentially there's a double basement because of the base isolation, and most of the work will be done below sea level. So it's incredibly complex, and I'm very grateful to have officers and advisors of the calibre we've had. So thank you. The Town Hall is probably Wellington's most significant heritage building, and it's significant to us emotionally because we've all been to events there, most of us. I became councillor in 2013 and haven't had a single council meeting in the building, unfortunately, but I have had a very long personal history with the building. I'm not going to repeat what the mayor said, but I'm going to tell you a few things about why the Town Hall is important to me as a Wellingtonian. So it's where I went as a primary school child to hear a young Maori soprano who people said was going to go far. Kiri Tikana was fantastic. I'd never heard Mozart sung before, and those acoustics were absolutely sublime. Even as an 11-year-old, I felt pretty silly at a concert wearing a school uniform, but you know, that's what happens over here. And then, you know, we had school choir performances there, the Beatles concerts were held there, we've had civic ceremonies there, and then, just to make you laugh, it's where, just after I left school as a 17-year-old, I came out as a debutant. And I found this photograph, found this photograph taken at the time by councillor Wolf's father, and here I am, aged, just turned 17, brace, God, I'm so brave, as a 17-year-old, my debutant photograph from when I was a debutant at the Town Hall. I might say, everyone in my family gave me a general whiskey to help me get through the evening. They didn't know, they were all helping me. So the thing is, I've had a very long personal history. My great-grandfather was a councillor when it was built. Joshua Charlesworth was also related to my family. I won't give you the full family tree. I'd just like to remind you that my great-grandfather was a Liberal. But I'd just also like to say that the Town Hall was built at a time when Wellington's population was 64,000 people. It didn't include Tawa in those days, not that that would have made much difference in figures. And our, our four bears really believed in our city's future. They took really brave decisions. We must do the same, we must be brave, we must get this building underway, let's have it restored, let's have it return to being part of our city's heart, or to be our city's heart. Let's get cracking, and I have absolute delight in seconding the mayor.
Councillor Penne.
Thank you. Well, I'd like to add my thanks to the officers and PWC and all the associated professionals. You've done a great job, and I know you've done your best to try and keep the cost down. Unfortunately, I do think PWC hits the nail on the head, they say it twice, the cost will be the cost, and I'm sure all the relevant professionals are taking note of that at the moment. You know, I am confident, unfortunately, that the cost will go up, so I think we need to brace ourselves for that. I think it is exciting in the short term, you know, which is one of the reasons why I've supported it. The School of Music has done a great job in raising the money, they're nearly there, that's a big achievement, and it will bring life to this important civic place. However, it has presented me with a conundrum, because I don't think this is actually very good long-term planning, and for the mayor to say that we're building for the next 100 years, I think is extremely problematic. This area is the most vulnerable in the city to climate change and to earthquakes. We, I do not think, are going to have a viable building in 100 years, 50 years maybe, and as we've heard from officers, they're planning for sea level rise of 500 millilitres, which is not going to be metres, and it's not going to be enough. Millilitres might be a bit small. And, you know, essentially, what we're being asked to do, when I've asked these questions, "Oh, look, we're going to deal with the whole issue of climate change in the civic square later on, and we're going to build seawalls", I appreciate that we have to get on with this building, but really, building our whole civic heart in this particular area is really, really problematic, and we're going to have to have a discussion. And my view is probably is that we'll have to move long-term, it's just not viable. The other problem that I've got is that this building has been seriously compromised by two previous councils or a number of councils. Putting this building here on one side and the Michael Fowler on the other has taken away a huge amount of its value. You know, the building that was designed in 1904 looked amazing and absolutely would have been worthwhile saving, but this has just been so compromised, so unless we build as another building, we can't get back, and I, you know, I think that would be extremely wasteful. The acoustics, that is debated. I know some people will say that they are some of the best in the world, there are others who are a little bit more unsure. I will just raise a bit of concern about the future of Mobb, the council as developer, it's not any indication of our staff, of course, they're very competent, but really, our job is not to be a developer, and I'm just a little bit concerned about that. However, I'm going to vote for it. We don't have any choice, it's a category one building, of course, I'll never support demolishing that. It's a shame that the council wasn't so staunch in terms of Usken. We can't mothball it, you know, that's irresponsible, but, you know, we are spending a lot of money for a building which is heavily compromised and won't last the distance over the long term, so it is expensive, but nevertheless, at least on an optimistic note, we will get the benefit of it for 50 years.
Councillor Dawson.
Thank you very much. One thing I will say from the start is that councillor Young and I have very different teenage experiences, but the thing we do share is that the Wellington Town Hall has been a significant part of those years. For me, though, it was, it was very different. It was the monthly YFC, or Youth for Christ rallies, the annual capital team convention, those were the misspent parts, I can promise you, but also countless brilliant concerts, everything from Lou Reed, where he was walked out on stage by roadies, completely non compos mentis, stood in one spot for the entire concert, then walked off again, but still top five concerts of my life, through to the neck, and of course, a totally brilliant solo concert by Bruce Coburn, wonderful singer, songwriter from Canada. For me, though, I have to say, as probably, I would take a guess, I'm possibly the only councillor on the table who's ever actually spent 15 years responsible for category one heritage buildings. There were 15 years of my life where I spent a lot of sleepless nights trying to keep a building standing that was costing more than I could possibly in my wildest dreams justify. I was asked some months ago, "At what point does the Town Hall become too expensive to do"? And my answer then was, "About $50 million ago"? That answer has not changed. I still feel the same way about that. I approached this debate through the lens of my experiences, particularly within the Anglican Church with the Christchurch Cathedral. At the end of the day, Christchurch Cathedral was and is a second-rate copy of a poorly-designed English parish church. Anyone who knows churches knows that. It was also an icon to the city, and at the end of the day, I do believe that it should have been demolished in something far more practical, beautiful and functional, put in its place, but it was never, ever, ever going to happen. It was just simply never, ever, ever going to happen. And that's exactly the situation we're in here. I agree with the mayor entirely. Regardless of whether we like the Town Hall or don't like the Town Hall, or like the money or don't like the money, we have very few choices here. If we ever try to knock it down, we'll be in court for the next 20 years, it'll cost us millions and millions of dollars, and we'll end up doing the same job at the end of the day for three times the price. We are in a difficult position on that one. There is really no real fundamentally good choice, and I also agree with the mayor that if we're going to do a strengthening job, let's do it right the first time. I cannot in good conscience sit around this table and vote for any project that will only strengthen a building to 50%. No, not done. We're going to do it, we're going to do it right, and we're going to do everything we possibly can to ensure that the people who use that building later will be as safe as they possibly can under today's engineering standards. That's the only way we can justify doing that. This is not my preference, but it is my reality, and I will be... This is not my preference, but it is my reality and I will be voting for it. I don't think we have a better choice. It is, as I said the other day, a dead rat that we do have to swallow. So we may as well just get on with the chewing and get it done with.
Councillor Marsh.
Thanks, your worship. And it's interesting to hear the various experiences of some of the councillors here. And councillor Young, you didn't mention the town hall bike sheds and what used to have them behind there.
I didn't know that.
Well, you told me plenty of stories. Look, the town hall is, is just a building, let's face it. And we talk about the acoustics, can there be better acoustics? Could we build a building that has got acoustics that are just as good? Of course we could. But the thing is, we can do something better if we decided to remove it, knock it down, demolish it. And we could do something too that would actually benefit civic square, that would really make it the heart. But the thing is, if we knock it down, we say we decide to knock it down because 112 million plus something is going to be too expensive, we end up with a whole load of difficulties and problems. A lot of people actually do say, they say, it's too expensive, you should be knocking it down. You should start again, you can do something better. And as I said, yes, we can. But if you think some of the anger around the waterfront developments, and Mr Pike can testify to this, some of the anger around the waterfront developments was really pretty vitriolic, this would be World War III. It would be, you know, something would certainly hit the fan in our city and you'd smell it for years. What would happen is delay, we'd have court, we'd have happy lawyers and then we'd have to get on and do it. But what it does bring to mind is all of our heritage buildings and how we look at them. There is a point, I believe, where we have to say, well, we can't afford to fix this one. We have to look at an alternative with some of our buildings. We've decided St James is one that we want to keep. We decide, well, hopefully we will decide that the town hall is one that we want to keep. When we get to the State Opera House, I don't know. I am not convinced that that is a treasure. I would like to see personally that that building is put to, that space is put to better use. And I know that there are going to be a lot of people that will say, no, we need the State Opera House. But we need more housing. We need all sorts of things in this city. We need ways that we can actually fund some of the prioritized heritage that we need to fix. That might be an option in the future. But as the mayor said, doing this work on the town hall is logical and it's rational and we need to do it.
Councillor Fitzsimons.
Thank you. There are some issues that come to this table where members of the public get exercised and get in contact with their local ward councillors. And for me, this is certainly one. And it's part of the reason I want to speak today because a number of people in my ward have made it very clear they will be watching what I say and how I vote. And I do want to reassure them that we have had excellent advice from officers. There has been extensive scrutiny from councillors of the information provided by officers. And I'm very confident that the information presented to us here and also in other workshops and in the public excluded sessions is good information and that we can rely on it. And I want to really thank the members of the public for their contact because it does send a message that this is important to Wellingtonians. And like many Wellingtonians, including other councillors here, I have my own memories of the town hall. It was a very important venue for me as a student. I attended a very rowdy public meeting there about the future of the waterfront. I also went to the funeral of Labour activist and feminist icon Sonia Davies that was held in the town hall. It is a very iconic Wellington institution. But I don't just think it's nostalgia that we need to reflect on here. The reality is, we do need to increase the project budget for this piece of work. We do need to do it, there's not a choice here. The law is really clear, we will not be able to demolish it, that's the only other option. So I do just want to reassure members of the public who have got in touch with me that there has been rigorous scrutiny of the information presented. We aren't taking this decision lightly. And I certainly will be voting in favour of increasing the project budget for this piece of work. And like fellow councillors, I do this reluctantly, but cognizant of the reality facing us.
Councillor Calvert.
Thank you. And I'll be putting up some amendments. I can do this now, I'll speak. Thank you. Look, I'm, I'm going to support these amendments and pretty much the rationale has been articulated by the mayor and my colleagues. I'd like to just first thank the officers for the rigor in their investigations and their advice in this paper, which I know, as councillor Fitzsimons said, we have scrutinised quite a much. Look, my recommendations aren't about changing any of the essence of the, of the officers' recommendations, just about enhancing them. Amendment aid is all, is just about ensuring that what we are delegated to the chief executive is in the context of the rest of the recommendations. So just making sure that we've got the right scope around that. Recommendation nine is about how we monitor going forward. I mean, we have a continuing role as governors and as city representatives and I think it's important that we put in these recommendations a bit more around our ongoing monitoring process because the money that we're talking about is very large. Recommendation 10 is about ensuring the decisions that are to be made in the future of how WCC will allocate its percentage usage of the town hall and its rooms. Not only is the town hall a heritage building in terms of infrastructure, its past uses as articulated by councillors Doss's, Young and Fitzsimons are also of heritage value to us and of cultural significance. And it's important that those sort of things are, are able to carry on. And so we need to ensure that, that we still enable community groups, schools to hold their prize givings, still to be had. So this recommendation is about enabling officers to come back to us, to report back to us of how that we may enable that. So councillor Wolf is going to support my, or second my recommendations and I ask for your, for your support as well. Thank you.
Councillor Wolf, you wish to speak? Councillor Foster?
Thanks Diane, I'm, I'm very happy to support these except there's one thing there and I've got to refer to one bit of the PE paper, so in the PE that we talk about the responsibility of the Finance Audit and Risk Management Subcommittee and that's where we generally take the, the project risk type things and that then reports through to City Strategy. So I think if you could add finance audit and risk into that, that would be helpful because then there will be a report from farm to, to City Strategy. Now clearly we cannot put, we cannot put, for example, things related to contingency and how that is going in a public quarterly report. So it's clearly got to be done in a slightly different fashion. So I think if you could add that, then I'm very happy with that. So you put annual, quarterly and annual reporting to Finance Audit and Risk Management and thus and then to City Strategy. So, because you know, we have that report which is done in PE of projects, which will go from farm to City Strategy.
Do you think we should just talk about relevant committees because the committees' structure needs to change next year?
Yeah, that's fine, yeah, that's fine, yeah, yep, yep, okay. Yep, that'll do.
Recommendation nine could be amended to reporting to the relevant committees with the appropriate delegation? Yeah, happy with that?
Can we just, sorry, I perhaps suggest that we change that will be included in formal reporting to the relevant committees because audit and risk is a separate means of reporting. And with the leave of the meeting, everyone's happy to accept that change. Thank you councillor Foster. No one else wish to speak to the amendment? Councillor Pannett to the amendment? No. Councillor Wolf, wish to speak to the amendment? No. I don't think there's any need for a right of reply councillor Calvert? Happy to vote on the amendment councillors? Those in favour, please vote yes. That's carried unanimously. And now back to the substantive and on the speaking order, I have councillor Kelly Freeman.
Thanks, your worship. Look, we build new civic amenities for the current generation and for the generations to follow. Maintaining, strengthening, upgrading, modernising existing civic communities is no different. We have no choice with this one, as has already been said. This is a 100-year-old building with another 100 years' life in it, probably much more than some of the more modern buildings that we have been responsible for or have seen built around the city. I applaud the collaboration that has been negotiated with NZSO and the music hub and I look forward to seeing the building used as a cultural and civic hub. There are two issues I want to raise, relatively minor, but worth noting anyway. One is the report has no financial projections for the amount of time which is the majority of time that the auditorium won't be used by the NZSO. And I mentioned the other day that I believe officers should consult urgently with reader and try and get some projections on that. This is a flat flawed auditorium, it is a multi-purpose venue. There will be an income stream there, how large it is is unclear, but that will of course help to, to balance the books. The other one I, I would suggest that we need to take another look at and it doesn't require an amendment, but I'm confident that the chief exec will, will deal with this, is the future of the Merrill suite in there. I don't believe there is any real likelihood in the, in the foreseeable future after the building is finished that the mayor and his advisers will be back there in that building. And certainly perhaps a Merrill reception room that is multi-purpose where meeting and greeting and used also by the other organisations might be a better use of that space. Look, I was disturbed but perhaps not distracted by Mr Burrow. I'd like to give you some food for thought. It's about 2,000 people will be attending conferences at this facility, concerts at this facility and then there are the performers. NZTA puts the value of a human life at something like $4 million. A quick calculation shows that in a catastrophe, that's an $8 billion loss of, of humankind should that building fall in. Do we want to strengthen this building to 50% or 80%? I don't, when you look at those figures. And if we had a problem with that, we would need a new town hall of course. Whether we would get one with the acoustics that we have is debatable. So I'll be voting somewhat reluctantly as per my colleagues' comments for this expenditure. We have no choice, thank you.
Councillor Free.
Right, well, where do I start? I will also be voting for this and I think a lot of the points that I would make probably already been made, probably more effectively and succinctly than I could make them. But just to respond to a little bit of what's been said. So councillor Pannett raised the question of the exterior of the town hall not being as valuable because of the buildings that are around it. And to some extent, that's probably true, but as was pointed out to us, it's actually also the interior of this building which is incredibly special. And I've been reassured that the interior rebuild has been, the plans have been looked at in detail by a restoration architect and the heritage values of that will be top of mind when it comes to the rebuild, well, not the rebuild, but the strengthening. So I think it's encouraging that, that as part of this project, we've looked at future use of the town hall and that there's a multi-purpose use going forward. I think that's actually a great thing. I'm a little bit concerned to make sure the public access is retained and that people who don't have a lot of money to go to concerts still have the opportunity through some events at the town hall to go to things that don't necessarily cost a lot of money so that the whole of the Wellington public is going to get some value out of what is quite a big spend. And I'll be, you know, I'll be expressing that to the staff. I think they've probably already taken that on board. As other colleagues have said, the other options are really not acceptable. We can't, not only can we not legally demolish this building or it would be extremely difficult, but the expense of demolishing this building would be considerable. That would require a lot of time, traffic management, health and safety considerations, you know, the demolition, the rubble that would be created, the landfill for that. There's actually a huge amount that would be problematic about demolishing it. And then the rebuild, and it doesn't, it's, it's expensive to rebuild buildings. And the modern building that we would get for the same amount of money would be not a patch on the town hall, not a patch. So this town hall has come through a lot of earthquakes. It's, it's a solid building, but we're aware now of the extreme earthquake risk that this city could potentially face. It may never happen, but this is an important, very significant building. And I agree with my colleague councillor Marsh that we may not be able to do this for every building. But there are a few buildings that we do need to save. We have only 115 years' worth of history with this building, but it's still one of our most significant and longstanding buildings. If we don't save this now, what sort of future will we be having for the generations that are coming beyond us? Mr Burrow was interesting to listen to. But staff have advised me that they went out to tender and they did not get any tenders that were prepared to have a fixed price. And Mr Burrow actually didn't tender. He probably had the opportunity, well, judging from what he said, he's an expert in this field, but he didn't actually tender. So look, I'm actually confident the staff have done the best they can. And there is risk and we need to be prepared to be brave and actually shoulder that risk by taking all the mitigations that I know the staff will be taking. So I'm sure they will be on top of this at every step of the way to make sure that we know what's happening, that they know what's happening, that we are kept informed as governors and that all of the mitigation and responsibility that we can have over this is taken. I want to talk a bit about the cost because, you know, we, we think this is a terrible cost, but this cost has been spent in Wellington. So this cost is actually contributing to the economy and it's, it's not, you know, money goes around in various different ways. So although it seems like a huge cost, it'll be fed back into the economy. So I'll be happy to support it.
Councillor Foster? You wish to speak to the substantive?
Thank you. I'm going to be in the same, same position as most of the others. One other comment I wanted to make was about the one other option that some people suggested we should embark on is use it as it is. Regardless of the things that have been taken out of the building at the moment, but clearly we cannot do that. It was a yellow sticker 10 years ago, that sticker for the type of building it is is now up. So effectively it's red stickered, so we cannot do that either. So I think everybody's covered very well the, the options we've got in front of us. Demolition is clearly unrealistic, I think you covered that very, very well. I think the other point that I would like to make is that we have been pushing very, very hard to get other heritage buildings in the city strengthened. I agree with Iona that there's a black mark against us with respect to Eusken. But we've been pushing very, very hard to get those other buildings strengthened. And if we did not do this, our credibility would be totally shot. So we have to do it in that, that sense as well. I agree completely that strengthening, we have to do it right. It's clear that the council of the 19, late 1980s didn't do it right. I was interested, Mr Mead, you didn't ring our former colleague and ask her about that? She always claimed credit for that. And the other point to make is it's not just about public safety, it's also about ideally the building surviving a major seismic event. And that's why we're doing this as well, we want the buildings to survive. We want Wellington to be a functioning city after a major seismic event. And that's why we don't just go for the 45 or 50%, because I agree with you, then we would be back here in a few years' time because we hadn't done it, we hadn't done it properly. And with the advice we've had, and I think we've had some fantastic work done by our staff, so thank you for all of that. The advice that we've had is, is quite clear, there's not actually that big a saving if we try and do it in a different way and get a lower number. And I think that's part of the message that we need to put out there, that we could, we could save a little bit, we could nickel and dime it, we'd get a much poorer result, but we wouldn't have saved the building long-term and I don't think that's a good way to go as well. We've done a lot of work, as I said, ground testing, building testing, but ultimately we can't do all of that testing without actually doing the work itself. And I think particularly if you refer to the Naylor Love quote on page, on 73, where basically they say, the ability to accurately scope the works is limited. We're acutely aware that this is not what was asked for in the tender. So we went out asking for a fixed price and they said, no, no, we can't do that without actually digging holes in the ground, without actually digging holes in the building and that I've done half the work and it would have cost a fortune to do that. So it's unrealistic, we have to say that this is a risky project and to share some of that risk. Couple of other points I wanted to make. I think I, I do agree with Richard Burrow about debt level and I think the, clearly the, the town hall and the St James are both over the prices that we, that we expected in the LTP. I said the LTP debt was too high, I still believe that. And I think what this is meaning, and also it's very clear that the, the And I think what this is meaning, and also, it's very clear that the construction market is very hot, and we are part of that. LT McGinnis dropped out of this process. Why did they drop out of this process? Full order book. We're part of their full order book. So we've got to be very careful that we only invest in the things that we need to do over the next few years, so that we're not actually pushing our own prices up as well as everybody else's. So we need to think about that. Something that hasn't been mentioned, I think the value of having the NZSO and Victoria University School of Music and the life that that will bring to this part of the city, that will be fantastic, and I hope that they also will occupy this building too. I'm a little uncomfortable that we've sort of expanded the town hall project to include the walls of this building, and, but I am reassured by staff that we are going to be getting some information about that and the building here and the relationship with the university about that very, very shortly. That's really important. And I would say that we do need to make some decisions about Civic Square and about all the other bits of Civic Square, and we need to get on with doing that. We need to get on with doing that in the timeframe that the town hall is out of operation, because we cannot have the town hall back, School of Music in here, and then we're knocking buildings down and doing major construction work there. So I'm going to support this. I think officers have done a fantastic job. There's been a lot of rigorous scrutiny being put into it. We have no choice, and we need to get on with this and fixing this wonderful building.
councillor Wolf.
Thanks, Mr Mayor. I firstly would just like to thank councillor Young for the advertisement. Secondly, yeah, sure, yeah, it's about brand. And it is about brand, because the town hall is very much about Wellington's brand. It's iconic. And I was very grateful to my fellow colleague for raising Sonia Davies' funeral, because another visionary for Wellington was the late Lloyd Morrison. It was actually the last big event in the town hall was Lloyd's funeral. Lloyd was a visionary for Wellington, and he was absolutely staunchly, a staunch advocate of retaining the town hall because it was so iconically Wellington, because it was heritage, because it was multifaceted. He was also a man that dealt with issues, not emotions. And I think that that's important when weighing our decision-making up, because there's a lot of emotion around the town hall, around the city. As Fleur mentioned, we've been lobbied and given information, and I do thank people like Bruce Welsh, who wrote to me, or wrote to us all yesterday, and also Richard Burrow, for giving us, those sort of people giving us other views and perspectives. I think it's really important, and particularly in regards to us thinking about the checks and balances behind investing so much money into a project. This is a huge infrastructure project. It's large, immense and complex. I think that we have done as much as what we could so far, and officers, you guys have been magnificent in this. This is the third or fourth time this has come to a council table after all the research and investigation that's been done. And I think that we have tried our level best to gain certainty, especially cost certainty, in regards to what we aim to achieve with this. We've done probity audits of the procurement through Price Waterhouse Coopers. We've looked at cost efficiencies down the track, and we'll be continually monitoring as to what we do as far as our risk assessment and our risk registers are concerned. We're looking for a return on our investment, and that investment isn't actually today. The decision we make today will be the investment that we make tomorrow, 25 years down the track, hopefully 50 and 100 years down the track. And it doesn't just relate to dollar value, it relates to the quality that we can offer our ratepayers and the visitors to Wellington that actually have the use of what is going to be an amazing facility. And particularly if it's handled well. And that's what councillors around the table and our officers will be intending on ensuring that we do for the future. So I'm very certain that we have acted in the best possible way to date, and I'll be looking to ensure with my colleagues that we're as accountable and as transparent as what we can be in moving forward. So, you know, I'm proud to support this project. It is a project that has a lot of legacy about it, but it's actually, as Lloyd would go for, it's about the issues and not the emotion. It's purely issue-based that we make our decisions. Thank you.
deputy mayor Day.
Kia ora koutou. I just want to say, I'm not going to speak for long, because everyone has really said it all, but I really do want to endorse the comments of all my colleagues, particularly councillor Fitzsimons with regards to the community feedback that we've had. It has been, it has been there, and it's great to see that people are really paying attention and taking notice of what we're doing and the size of the decision that we're making today. But I also want to assure the public that we have all asked many, many questions. And on that note, I'd like to acknowledge the officers, because they've had to answer all these questions, and they've come back with really great answers. So to Bead and Ian on the project team, thank you. I know that it's been a long, long process, and you've worked tirelessly on it. And to Kane, David and Andy on the project board, thank you for the work that you've done, making sure this is steering in the right direction and that you're really thinking about those risks, because that is really important, so thank you. And to Richard and his team from PWC, thank you for putting your eyes over it as well. We really appreciate that and your feedback. So my eyes do water at these costs, but I want to be reassured that my eyes aren't watering because I am sad, because something has happened that has harmed a lot of people, as was suggested today. Looking at strengthening it to a 50% rating would make my eyes water if something happened and we knew that we had made a decision that put people's lives at risk. And I want to be making sure that we can actually move forward with this, because it does feel like we've been in a holding pattern for quite some time. And to me, the other options would haunt us all forever, ever. Either we would be hearing about it all the time, the decision that we made that was, really wasn't the right one. So I completely support this today and am pleased that other councillors are doing the same.
Thank you all councillors for your positive comments and support for this project, and it's based on the feedback that we've had today. I'm confident this project will proceed with a strong backing from this council. Just in some, around your comments, look, four things I've taken from your feedback. A base-isolated building will secure the future of the town hall for the next 100 years, certainly in terms of seismic response. It's a project we want to get on with and want to do it properly. We've got committed partners with long-term leases of 25 years plus options for 10 years, but realistically, with the quality of the partners we have, the NZSO now being 72 years old, Victoria University with its longstanding tradition of being our largest university in the city, I would hope that those two partners will be there for the next 100 years plus. And also, we will bring life to the precinct and to the city. We'll have a cultural and performing arts hub right here in the heart of Civic Square, and that will bring life and breath to the area. And finally, we've shown financial prudence through the robustness of this process. No one wants to pay a dollar more than they have to, but the price is the price and the cost is the cost. We've also exhibited cultural and social prudence and understanding what Wellingtonians want, and also legislatively understanding what we need to do in terms of the requirements of this building and securing its future. So thank you all for your contributions. Thank you to those staff that have been intimately involved, and to the deputy mayor for acknowledging each of you individually. Thanks for the great work you do on behalf of the city. Kia ora, and we may now vote. And I'm pleased to see councillors and for all those in attendance, it's unanimous decision for us to get on and strengthen the town hall. Good luck to all those involved in the future project and getting it built. We'll now break for morning tea, and we'll return and we'll consider the other items on the agenda. Hi councillors, if you do want to, it's with you. I mean, this could take five minutes, it could take fif- We're now going to use report 3.1, a report of Regulatory Processes Committee meeting of the 13th of February 2019, councillor Sparrow.
My brief moment in the spotlight. Right, this is a straightforward road-stopping proposal relating to land adjoining 42 View Road, Hutton Bay. We're agreeing to public notification commencing. I move we accept officers' recommendations.
councillor Kelby, you have a second? Anyone wish to speak? All those in favour, please vote. We'll take the next one separately. B.
I'll keep this one brief. Another straightforward road-stopping proposal relating to land adjoining 3 Roy Street, Newtown. I move we accept officers' recommendations.
Let's rinse and repeat. Councillor Sparrow, invoke. councillor Kelby-Freeman. councillors Young, Foster, Kelby-Freeman. I declare those recommendations carried. We're now going to move into, I recommend that we move into public exclusion pursuant to provisions of the Local Government Official Information and Meetings Act 1987 in accordance with clauses 4.1, 4.2, 72B2 in section 48.1A. I'm hoping to move councillor Dawson, have your second. Please vote. Recommendations carried. Could I now ask of any members of the public still present, if you could please?